Okay. We will call this meeting to order at about 6:02 on Tuesday, January 12th. This is an electronic meeting by teleconference. As Chairman of the Hampton School Board, I've determined that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor, Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, that to properly ensure the safety of the public and that of several of the board members who are within the CDC guidelines needing to take special precautions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming we are utilizing a teleconference service for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public may join this electronic meeting by calling 1-857-444-0744 and use the code 649427. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business, we're going to see some videos from our IA folks. Mr. Lynn Paris, are you all set to run those? All set.
I just want to let you know that some of the IAs are here today. They put a great deal of time in preparation of a day of what it's looking like.
Hello and happy new-
Okay. Sorry.
Hello and happy new year. Thank you for allowing us to share about our arts programs with you this evening. Although we are not there in person, we are extremely eager and excited to offer up to you some wonderful details of the individual integrated arts disciplines at Center School. You will hear from four of us this evening. I myself, I'm Tori Mallett, the music teacher. Up next will be Lynn Cutting, our school librarian; then Michaela Moran, our PE teacher; and last, Kimberly Olson, our visual arts teacher. In an effort to keep this brief, we have sent this slideshow presentation to your emails so that you may watch any of the embedded videos on your own. Also, you'll have access to our contact information should there be any questions or follow-up. For music, I can say things have certainly also been very different this year, but I am very proud to say that this class is still very active and engaging for students. I have received wonderful feedback from both parents and students, and I'm excited to see what the rest of the school year shall bring. Our integrated arts schedule is organized by trimesters. Each week during the second trimester, I am seeing 16 cohorts in person and working with each of the fully remote classes in the afternoons and am offering enrichment lessons and activities via pre-recorded videos that are posted every Friday afternoon. Every child has received a goodie bag of materials to support our learning while following our COVID safety guidelines. These materials encourage movement, sound exploration, and creativity. Everything from dancing scarves and beach balls to sidewalk chalk and popsicle sticks are included. I travel from room to room on my cart and take classes outside whenever possible. The music curriculum at Center School is built to follow the National Core Arts standards. This year has required me to modify our music curriculum, but we are still following those four overarching anchor standards of performing, connecting, responding, and creating. This year, we have a heavy focus on these following items: music literacy, ear training, active listening skills, notation symbols, and more. There are several cross-curricular connections made to math, reading, and history throughout every unit. An important focus for me this year especially was the need for students to create and explore sound and movement while together as a group. We have been using each moment outside to do just this. If you happen to drive by and see us out there, I hope you enjoy the smiles that they have been sporting on their faces. This time allows for some much-needed fresh air, mass breaks, and just simple and pure fun. Lessons are all carefully crafted to allow students to have similar experiences both in person and through the screen. Lessons are also encouraging students to relate to the music on a personal level, and are experiencing some alternative social and emotional types of learning while working on our listening journals. And it is important to me that each student learns to appreciate music as a lifelong hobby, skill, or joy that they can continue to enjoy for the rest of their lives. Lastly, our performing practices have had to certainly change this year, but I hope that you all had a chance to see our video performance this holiday season. We call it a music video. It was posted on the SAU 90 and Center School social media pages as well as airing on our TV Access channel, and there will be more to come later this year just like this. Thank you for your time this evening.
Hi, this is Lynn Cutting from Center School Library. I just wanted to share with you some topics and things that we've been working on with changes due to COVID this year. And as you can see, kids are not allowed to come to the library this year, but I am able to go to their classrooms and share books and things with them and the curriculum that I cover with them on a cart. So they make requests, and they have told me books and characters that they want to read about, and I bring them to them. The standards that are being covered are all AASL library standards, the same ones that we've been covering before. They've just been modified this year to meet the needs of students and so that all students are getting the same ones. We've been doing a lot of STEM and STEAM projects to keep them connected to books and interested in. So the kids at home get to do them remotely, and the kids in school get to do them, and they've been having a great time doing them and creating and being innovative. So the virtual story, Read Alouds, that I have been doing and have done in the past have been really fun for the hybrid kids and the remote kids when I can't be live with them. So they get to listen to me reading stories, and I've been trying to be creative about where I read, sometimes outside, sometimes inside. And I gave the students a tour of the library because some students, especially kindergartners, had never seen the library before. So I felt it was important for them to see it and know where it is and what it looks like.
Hi, Center School.
Hi, Center School.
So I wanted to try something different.
And I'm the librarian at Center School.
And lastly, if there's anything that you need, my email address is there, and you can contact me with any questions or concerns. Have a great night.
Hi, everybody. My name is Michaela Moran, and I am the physical education teacher here at Center School. The physical education curriculum is designed to address the three domains of learning: cognitive, affective, and psychomotor. All lessons are aligned with the Shape America Physical Education standards with a heavy emphasis placed on the development of motor skills and movement patterns through for our K-1st and 2nd grade students. Health connections are discussed through a muscle of the month where students learn a new muscle in their body, where it's located, its function, and how they will use it, as well as a fitness tip of the week related to health standards such as nutrition, emotional regulation, sleep, and personal hygiene. Students develop both personal and social responsibility through gameplay and skills practice in our lessons, and there is a focus on creating an inclusive learning environment for students to develop a positive outlook on living a physically active lifestyle. Here are some photos of our space that we are using here at Center School for the curriculum outcomes of kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd grade. Throughout these outcomes, students are working on the development of locomotor movements as well as manipulative movements, creating an understanding of personal space, differentiating between movement concepts and patterns, responding to rhythms through dance, and a health-related knowledge including the human body and major muscle groups, and understanding of the heart, how it beats, how to take the heart rate, and the importance of getting their heart rates up during exercise, as well as understanding the value of physical activity for a healthful living. Here you can see students in some skills practice such as dribbling through soccer. In this particular lesson, students are moving through the cones at their own speed for their own differentiation through the lessons to practice that ball control. Each Friday, I am posting PE enrichment videos through Fitness Friday online where students can get active while at home with quick bursts such as dance, kids tabata, or skills practice. Here are a few more photos of our students in action. And again, here they are moving through an obstacle course, practicing movement patterns and pathways. This year has been so great, and I am so thankful for the opportunity to teach at Center School. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Olson. I teach art education at Center School, and I'm so happy to share with you this evening. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your support in helping us get back to school, which has been so wonderful to see students again in person. Not in the art room this year, of course, but outside. We have an outdoor classroom in different areas of the school campus, also spending time within the student classroom, as you heard from my colleagues. So outside, it's a wonderful thing for students to get a mass break and a change of scenery as well, get some fresh air and exercise, some sunshine, really enjoying that space outside. That has been a longtime goal of mine to do more outdoor learning. And so here we are, using drawing boards that we brought from the art room and materials as well. Students are also at home online in different capacities, remote, their hybrid home days, also the snow days as well. So we have a wonderful platform that we have really been supported in trying to set up so that students can learn and continue their learning no matter where they are. This has also been a great way to archive and reflect on our own instruction, continue to gather resources and have them all in one place, as well as student work to review as well, so strengthening our own practice through these online platforms. Students that are remote fully are adapting wonderfully as they did in the spring and really amazed us and inspired us. And we have sent home materials so that students can participate in lessons. They must be organized, and so that is a skill that they are learning early. It will serve them well in the future. And so typically, they are ready for class, no matter if they're at home or at school. The hybrid opportunity was wonderful. It was a great enrichment time when we could offer some new lessons, lessons from home with materials from home. Parent involvement in supporting their children and sharing the work that the children were doing has been a wonderful connection, really solidified the school-home connection, which is sometimes so elusive and difficult, and also helped the parents to really understand what students are experiencing through our classes. I've been able to continue my artist study curriculum where students learn about the artist as a person, really connecting to social-emotional learning goals of understanding perseverance and self-awareness and working with others and connections. Even though we're not really able to work with others, they're still able to collaborate in these ways. Through an exhibit, many exhibits throughout these lessons, including COVID Can't Bring Us Down, which detail the student experience and the student response to the situation at hand. So hopefully you'll get a chance to take a look at that. And here is a curriculum overview for kindergarten and 1st grade based on the National Visual Arts Standards. Creating and Responding, Connecting, and Presenting categories of standards based on grade level. A little bit about the lessons that I teach in the units. ICAN statements base for students, some curriculum review letters that go home with all students and their trimester portfolios that they create of their work to share with families. And then more connections with the families, again, an open house letter, two open letters that I wrote to colleagues and parents and community based on the student experience in the spring and then also in the fall. So you really get an idea of what students are experiencing. And our online museum exhibit through Instagram. Thank you so much for your time this evening, for your continued support to offer the arts to students in Hampton, and also Happy New Year. Thank you so much.
Hello and Happy New Year. Thank you for allowing us to share about our arts program.
So, pre-COVID days, this is where physical education was held in our nice new gymnasium at Hampton Academy. However, now, during times of COVID...
We made it through tri-1. How do you think PE might travel?
PE for tri-1 were really well this year, considering COVID. We were able to get outside fairly often, doing games like class deck and can jam and four-square, so it went really well.
Hey, we only have a couple minutes, but do you want to talk a little help while we're here?
Yes.
So I think we should continue on the skills-based thing. Since we did accessing information and stress management and goal-setting, I think we should continue with that and see where we can go with things like nutrition and human growth and development and all that kind of stuff.
Sounds good to me.
What do you want to do for try-two for PE?
Try-two for PE, I think we need to sit down and talk about that with the colder weather coming and get some outdoor activities together. So maybe we can brainstorm some ideas for that.
Yeah, that sounds good. Oh, shoot, kids are coming, we gotta go.
Hi there. I thought I'd invite you into my remote class today. So I teach 12 classes, 10 of them in person this trimester, and two are remotely. So when I'm doing my remote classes, I have my desktop computer open, and I have a Google Meet open with the students in it. And then I have some assignments on the other side in my Google Classroom. So I have those two open. And then I use a separate computer to get GoGuardian up. GoGuardian lets me see the activity on the computers that the students are doing. So I can instruct them, get them started on an assignment, and then watch them and be available for contact. Right now, they're learning tools to use for remote learning. So they're using a program called Screencastify, which they can record their screen and talk and narrate and have a video of them. They're also using WeVideo to create videos to turn in for projects. They're learning about Google Slides and how to present information virtually, and they're also learning how to collaborate online. So that's my remote class.
When you learn a language, you learn lots of things. You learn to read, you learn to write, but you also learn to listen and speak. And we found a program called Duolingo that's free, and we can use it with our classrooms, we can use it in Google Classroom, students can use it at home, and they can also use it while they're in school. This program is great for anyone that wants to learn a language, especially when it comes to speaking and listening.
In addition to the application Duolingo, which enhances speaking and listening activities for our students, we also use another application called Quizlet. As you can see by my screen, I have several sets here. And the current one that we're doing in class is El Tiempo y las Estaciones, which is Weather and Seasons. This is great for students in class as well as at home because in addition to flashcards, they can also practice their writing skills, they can listen and spell, they can test themselves, play games like matching and gravity, as well as there's a live component where in class we can play games and practice vocabulary.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Reno.
And I'm Gillian Gueye, and together, we are the Hampton Academy Music Department. We are thrilled to be offering all three music options to students this year at Hampton Academy. While some schools across the state have had to cut their performing ensembles due to the strict guidelines surrounding singing, instrument playing, and remixing students for ensembles, we have been able to continue to provide instruction in chorus and band, as well as in general music, by taking advantage of the remote instruction days in our district's hybrid model. While some music skills transfer quite easily to the remote format, virtual instruction for an ensemble required a big shift in how we teach and how students learn to sing and play music this year. Though we have experimented with it just for fun, there is no way for us to play or sing a song together live due to the different speeds that each of our videos transfer to each other on a Google Meet. As a result, our group rehearsals are a lot quieter than they used to be. Bottom hand, your thumb goes under this fancy little hook. One, two, three. Those are your home keys on the bottom hand. Okay, so that is a D. That's the trickiest note we know so far. D, okay? Next note. All right, let's try that. One, two, ready? Thank you, oh, thank you, men and women brave and strong. A couple of you played my little game. I want to see your fingers. You can go up, or you can go forward, you pick. One, two, do it again. B-flat, go all the way up to the G. And that's the G. We're almost at the top. We have a couple more notes, and then we'll know the full scale. One, two, three, four. This is the Alto final recording for Thank You Soldiers Christmas Edition. Standing nice and tall. Ready, and...
When I lay my head down every night and go to sleep in peace, I can stay and knowing all is well while you're standing on your feet.
As we have asked our students to learn a lot of new skills in this world of remote learning, we too have had to learn new skills in audio and visual editing. Using programs like Audacity and WeVideo, we synchronize each individual student's audio track to create a full group recording, and line up their singing and playing videos in a separate program to create a final performance with everyone finally singing and playing in sync with each other. Well, we cannot wait for the day that we grace the stage at Hampton Academy once again with a packed house. The smiles on the faces of our students when we share our final product, performing together, yet apart, makes all of the work that goes into our new virtual performances all worth it.
Hi, my name is Amber Levine, and I'm the computer technology teacher at Marston. I'm just going to share with you what we're doing in technology class. So I am remote teaching this year. I'm all meeting with each cohort class one time a week when they are remote, and I'm also meeting with all of our fully remote students twice a week. I also teach, I also help out with technology support and creating and developing SEL lessons for our Wednesday meeting groups. So we're working on some internet safety, online, and online safety that was a big focus for the first trimester. These are just some resources that we use, some activities we did. We also did some coding and programming through code.org. There are some student examples listed here. And we also did STEAM. Because we're not able to do STEAM at Marston, we're doing it virtually this year. So there are monthly STEAM challenges as an option for students, as well as each trimester, students are presented with a STEAM challenge during technology class. Third grade did a Mayflower challenge, and this related to their social studies unit that they did. Here are some cool examples. Fourth grade students did a Save the Turkey from Becoming Dinner, and here are some of their examples that they did. And fifth grade had to do a 3D turkey with a pen, and they used math with this. They had to create a perimeter of 30 to 40 inches with this. And these are some of the examples for that.
Hi, coming to you from the in-house integrated arts staff at Marston School. Unlike Amber, we are doing it a little bit differently because we're in school. So we are in-school teaching the classes that are in here, both groups, the Cohort A and the Cohort B. We are online remote teaching to the kids that are at home, and we are also providing hybrid teaching and support for the students on their days home, whether it's the A day or the B day. We are providing extra mass breaks with recess coverage throughout the day, and we are doing morning bus duty and screening check to make sure that all surveys have been filled out correctly before coming to school. We are also leaders in the SEL mentor groups on Wednesdays. In art, we are art on a cart. We are traveling to the classrooms with the materials individualized for each kid, for each student, and each room. Third grade, an example of one of the projects we've worked on this year and been able to do with the material management, has been bug drawings. An example of fourth grade is we are still able to do our Aboriginal dot paintings, but to modify material management, we stuck to one color, and then we used colored pencils as an alternative. And for fifth grade, we are making masks, and I know what you're thinking, not those kind of masks. We are doing our African mask unit, and we were able to do that as normal this year. An example of a remote learning lesson for the students who are home, here's a Google link that you could explore later on your own if you're interested. Basically, it's just a slideshow presentation that would be given to the kids along with a digital presentation with cameras, drawing examples, et cetera. And here's an example of a final product from a student at home. I've also created some interactive Google Classroom pages for both the in-school students and the at-home students. On these Google Classrooms, they can hit things, enters them to museums and online drawing websites, provides extra art activities for students when they're at home. These are just another example of one of my interactive Google Classrooms that has been provided to all the students. Hybrid lessons that are being provided to students on a weekly basis, that those kiddos who are at home have opportunities to explore art. This is an example of a scribble unit that I provided, and you can see that even the parents are getting involved, which is kind of fun. So whether or not we're on a cart or in a classroom or an extended recess or remote teaching, we are meeting the creative needs of all the students at Marston and trying to have a pretty good time while we're doing it. And we are still trying to meet those goals for the Marston students with art and trauma through the arts. And we try to do that just as we always have through creating creativity for the students to make sure that they're having a good time, feeling safe at school, and having new ways to express themselves.
And now, welcome to the library with Mrs. Griffin. So same thing, we have library on a cart. So book checkout and delivery is a little different this year as students are not coming to the library. Students request books online using our library program and when I'm in their classrooms, and then I come back to the library and check all their books out and deliver them to the classrooms. So far, this year, we had 3,125 books that have been checked out as of December 31st, and just for the month of December, there were 447 books checked out. Students are just so thrilled to have books in their hands and not be reading on screens all the time. So I will look forward to getting more books in kids' hands as we start this new year. In addition to in-person and remote lessons, I also post activities on our library Google Classroom each month. So there's Read Alouds, holiday celebration activities, tours of museums, amusement parks, author highlights, and special online lessons, et cetera. So here's an example for the month of January. Each of these pictures, when the students click on it, it will take them to either another Google Slide or a link. So for example, if they click on that January is Braille Literacy Month, and it takes them to a slide about Louis Braille. And each of these pictures then take them to various videos or other resources to learn more. This is another example of Martin Luther King Jr. and resources for students. This is Snoopy and Charlie Brown, and these, when they click on their pictures, will take them to book links on Epic, which students have accounts on, and they can read these books. And this is another example of nonfiction pandas, nonfiction fiction books, drawing tutorials, and learning all about pandas. Now passing it on to Ms. Cruz.
Hello, my name is Cassie Cruz, and I am the PE teacher at Marston School. This year, I'm teaching in-school, which includes both Cohorts A and B. I am teaching live classes to our fully remote students. I am supporting the hybrid students on their days at home. I am on the District SEL Committee along with the Marston School Climate Committee. I lead a mentor group on Wednesdays, and I cover recess and morning bus duty. Here's a look at what PE has looked like this year. We are outside every day when weather permits. On days there is inclement weather, we do PE in the class's classroom. I have created a PE Google Classroom for every class in the school, where I provide fun PE activities that students can do right at home. The PE Google Classroom is also where I'm able to meet with our fully remote students. We have had lots of fun being active in our live remote PE classes. Thanks to the PTA, every remote student received a jump rope, which we have had a blast using. Here's an example of one of my live remote classes, along with a virtual gym full of fun activities. And now on to Mr. Carlson with music. And now, on to Mr. Carlson with music.
A french fry and it groovy.
What a time we had at the monster party, spiders in the hall and his zombie named Marty. Ghost made chicken, we danced like mad. Frankenstein said it was the best time he ever had. Hey, those kids, move. Here's more Halloween songwriting.
The night and the light, you will always be there. This is how to show what you care.
I'll make a comment, they were all great presentations, enjoyed them. Anybody else on the board?
Just phenomenal.
They're phenomenal. Sorry, no, they're phenomenal. There's no other word for it, they are phenomenal.
But I'd like to commend the teachers for doing an outstanding job in this difficult environment that we face.
And you know what, not one of them have forgotten to have fun. And they are fantastic, it's great. It really is worth it for anybody to see this video, because they have put extra effort, they've had fun, they've included the kids. You can, you can survive in a not-good situation, and thank you for doing that. Wonderful.
So, so I had asked them to present, only because I know that that's been a question that we have gotten, you know, what does integrated arts look like in light of COVID-19? And of course, I have the pleasure of going around and seeing what's happening at all three schools. And today, just in my visit alone, I got to experience a field trip to the Ice Castles. Thank you, Mrs. Cutting. I got to enjoy, obviously, rhythm and songs. I got to enjoy art that started indoors but that went outdoors. So, I get to see a lot of this on a daily basis, but if you don't get that window into what happens into these classrooms, you really don't know. So, we're, we're happy to showcase that tonight, and they're here to answer questions. But additionally, we'll also put it on Channel 13, so that our viewers at home can have a chance to take a real in-depth look at what is happening. And make no mistake about it, and I think what I know and what I see is they really have three jobs this year, in the sense that they're doing the in-person, they're doing the remote, they're also helping out on those Wednesdays as well. So, I know in some, some ways, it feels like they've got three jobs on top of everything else they're already doing. So, thanks for letting us and indulging us in this time, because it was, I thought, important to share with you.
I don't know if we put School Things on Channel 22, but...
I wouldn't be surprised.
It would be nice to see that on Channel 22 as we get into budget voting season. So, the people that don't just go to the school channel would go to the town channel and also see it. That's great. So, back a month or so, we had Jim Dougherty and some HYA folks come. Yes, you folks don't have to stay, thank you.
They just came for questions or anything you might have.
Sorry?
They just came for questions.
You didn't come play Saki with me.
I missed it, right?
Oh, you missed a good game.
The week's not over yet.
I think she is, though.
I'm, I gotta go back to remote learning with the littles.
So, I see that Jim's here, and we had said we would revisit things, specifically middle school sports. Did you have any thoughts, Jim? Want to use the microphone or?
Hello? Is that on, Greg? Okay. So, I made three proposals, and you guys considered the proposals. And I think what we did is pretty consistent with the rest of the Seacoast. There's nothing going on. So, that, I mean, that's what I have to report. There are a few teams, schools who decided to do the intramural and skills route that was proposed, and they're having success with it. There's no interschool games going on, though. So, really forming teams now would be about, do we want to do intramurals with, with the COVID spiking? Because we wouldn't have teams to play. It would be more of a skills and drills and intramural type of thing if you wanted to proceed with that. So, I think what is in front of us now is looking for the rest of the winter season and then planning ahead to spring and keeping our eye out and deciding what we want to do then.
Board members, any questions, comments?
When does spring's sports start?
End of March.
At the end of March?
Yeah, we would do sign-ups early March. And, you know, we'll start the schedule in February, we'll have a schedule prepared, as if we're doing a full season. We would have the sign-ups in March, and then we would start practicing as teams when the snow lets us. It's all, all outdoor. So, we have baseball, softball, and track. Track's a pretty big undertaking, we have a massive team at Hampton Academy, so.
It would seem to me, and I think Ellen's back there, but the phys ed instructors are not allowed to use the gym for classroom, their gyms for classroom instruction right now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Which, when you can't get outside, must be a very hard job. In fact, I know it's a hard job, I've done it. But I don't see if we're not letting our classroom teachers use the gym, how we could run middle school athletics.
Right.
So, I don't think we need to have a vote on this. I think it's just a consensus unless someone wants to vote. No? So, we'll just leave it as is and you can come back to us.
Sure, we'll monitor for the, for the spring.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do. All right, thank you.
Okay, Jimmy, thank you.
A pleasure.
Yep. Committee, Frank?
I have a question for Lois. I may be jumping a little bit here, but where do we stand with teachers being part of the first response to be inoculated?
Yeah, we are, we are, yeah, we are jumping, and I'm happy to do that, or we can wait till we get there?
We'll wait till we get to her report, thank you.
Well, I was looking at it towards the sports end of it, that's right.
Well, in regards to everything, really, but I know you'll be talking about that.
Yep, I will.
Ginny, did you have any news from the Budget Committee?
Oh, we've just been having a fantastic time. We will present our final review, final review, and then the public hearing is next Thursday night at 7:00. You cannot attend in person, but you can call the number that they will have available and the code, because we are holding it at the Town Hall, and there's only room for those people who are on the committee and the, I think it's the Superintendent, the Business Administrator, and then the same for the Town.
I have that information, I'll give it, do you want me to give it to you now?
I guess.
I can give them information out.
Okay.
Okay, so it's Thursday the 14th at 7:00, and you can call 1-857-444-0744, and the code is 1-56034. Again, it's on the 14th, this Thursday, and it starts at 7:00. Telecomm.
Can you shoot us an email with that?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Yep. We'll put it on, we can put it up too on our, on Facebook.
Thank you, Ginny. Any questions? Okay. Wellness, Andrea? The School Boards Association Annual Meeting is on Saturday, the 25th. I'm registered to attend virtually. I have all of the resolutions that are recommended by the School Boards Association, and I have them electronically, so if anybody would like them or like to see them, let me know. It's not the most exciting reading, but just let me know, and I'll shoot you an email tomorrow with them. I, I would be voting in line with the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Barrett Christina does a pretty good job, and...
Agreed, agreed.
Is there any recommendation that stands out?
No, not really, Frank, it's pretty mundane stuff.
Okay.
SLC, nothing? Okay. Rec Department, Andrea? Nothing? Uh, let's see, PTA, Ginny?
Nothing, except they're doing their meeting remote, is it this Thursday?
I believe it's a week from tonight, the third Tuesday of the month, correct?
Yep.
Oh, that's right, so it's a week from tomorrow, the 20th?
Anybody else have anything from their reports? Okay. At this time, we have opened the floor to public comment. Is it LJ and...
Keith, Keith Lloyd and Greg? Do you want to ask him if he has any public comment? Is that what we're gonna hear?
Right, Greg, do we have any, do you know if we have any public comment coming through?
There is no one waiting online.
No one? We'll give them a couple minutes. Amy?
Hello. Happy New Year, can you hear me? Okay. Big kudos to my colleagues, boy, I tell you, it's, it's wonderful seeing, I mean, I see what they do in my classroom, but to see it as a, kind of as a, as a big hole, it's, it's really amazing, and I'm thrilled that we're able to really reach the whole child. Kids love it, there's no question about it. But I did want to just take this opportunity to really thank you again for giving the, the teachers those two and a half days, because the work that we did was phenomenal. We were able to do a tremendous amount of professional development, we were so productive. And I had so many people say to me, are you, because they know I go to these meetings, and they said, please say something, please say something. So, publicly, on behalf of, of the staff, I just really, really want to thank you for that opportunity. We, we used it well. So, thank you again.
Okay, we'll continue, if somebody calls in, we'll, we'll let them have their say. Principals' reports, Tim, anything? Nothing? Okay. Any questions for Tim? You have his report. Mr. Sadler, anything for us? Okay, and you have his report, any questions on that? And Mr. O'Connor?
I will be free.
You can be long or free.
We love, I gotta be, I'm so proud of those people, as I'm sure are my colleagues are. That was, that was quite a display. It's January, and it's kindness month in our entire school district. So, we want to start the tone for 2021 in saying that kindness matters, and that we will lead with kindness, and always and forever. So, we have some fun activities for the kids this month. We are celebrating No Name Calling Week, which is a Nash, it's kind of new for us, but we're excited. Honestly, we're just trying to create an environment where harassment and bullying is not tolerated and not, and bias of any kind is, is really not, not tolerated. So, other than that, we are having fun in January so far. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. O'Connor? Okay, no, we're good, no, we're good. Okay, moving on, Dr. DeSylvan Atherton? We have your report, anybody have any questions for her?
No, it's a nice report.
Okay. Mr. Lynn Paris?
I just would like to thank the community for its continual support in, in our technology budget. It results in what you saw today, is a culmination of, you know, the eight years I've been here and what we've been able to do with technology has resulted. This teacher's really doing a great job, well-prepared in the use of technology on a daily, daily basis to really reach the needs of the kids, especially in this tough COVID environment. So, once again, thank you to everybody in the community for the continual support of, of our use of technology in the district. Any questions for me? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lassard, anything for us? Any new news?
Okay, nothing but this one is opportunities. If you will allow me, just a minute or so?
Sure.
It brought to my attention that I should make the general public more aware of what the $300,000 is spent on every year, and why it's not a million or a hundred dollars. So, if I could just briefly take a second here to talk about that. There's a difference between deferred maintenance and preventative maintenance. Hampton Academy was rebuilt because everything was deferred maintenance. And that ended up costing us a whole new reconstruction business. It came out beautiful, it was done on a budget, and soon we will probably see some of the deficiencies that this building has as well. Examples are no dehumidification in the gymnasium, and a few other things that also happened with our other buildings. Center School was built in 1927, I want to say, I don't have it in front of me right now. That building is 94 years old. Then we had the new addition that was put on, and we still call it the new addition, don't we, Tim? That was put on in 1999. That makes it old enough maybe to buy a beverage, 21 years old. The elevator in that building was done in 1986 and hasn't been touched since. The original elevator in this building was not replaced, because that was an era who could save money. So, we go over to the Marston School. Marston School was built in 1956, the second addition was put on in '73, and the new part of the building, where the new boiler room is, was constructed in 1996. But Mr. Sadler would probably tell you, we call that the new boiler room when Palmer and Sichard comes to fix something. My reason for saying this is, we can't concentrate on deferred maintenance, we've got to really practice preventative maintenance. We have a list of growing things that are constantly added to the preventative maintenance. This year, we are asking to spend money on the ventilation system of the Center School, which consists of a... ventilation system of the Center School, which consists of a 1957, I gotta get that number down in my head, part of the building, which is the three-story part of the building. It had minor renovations done in 99, but the ventilation system in that part of the building is original. Most of it is confection, which means heat rises and escapes. That's how the ventilation is working in that building under very low CFMs. I think it's a year now that COVID-19 came to our world. And on March 13th, we went out of school because we didn't know what COVID-19 was going to bring us. SAU 90, the school board, superintendent's office, and our instructional staff in leadership worked very hard to put together programs to bring students back to sit in front of their teachers and get instruction. The only way we were able to do that at Center School was to buy portable air scrubbers. Each one of those classrooms in the 1927 section of the building, in the 1959 wing that goes from the gymnasium that's at the Galley Hatch side, over to the two classrooms that go to the Ross Colony side. That was 1959. So that's what, 62 years old. So we have air scrubbers in there. It is a, it is significant to take care of our problem right now. It's a Band-Aid. We need to improve the ventilation system in there, which brings me back to talk about the $300,000 Warren article. Improving the ventilation at Center School will be a phased project. We will include dehumidification. It's going to take multiple years to complete the project. COVID may be gone, or it's maybe here. I hope it's gone. But in 2006, Fred Engelbach and myself started an adventure of studying ventilation at Center School. 2006. It is now 2021, and I think it's time that we move forward on this project to make it safer and a more comfortable building for our instructional staff at Center School. But I want people to know, the school board, I, and management, always struggling with the $300,000. We still have two buildings that not many major things have been done in 20 years. Yes, we've done new lighting. Yes, we've had support to replace and repair boilers. Yes, we've had the support to improve fields. Not really a lot, because $100,000 does not buy, I mean, the $300,000 does not buy what it did in 2000. $300,000 in the year 2000. Can anybody guess what that's worth today? $460,000. So we've really fallen behind. But my main point of bringing this up is I want people to know that we need the $300,000 to continue to chip away and keep our building safe and healthy for our instructors, and especially for our students with young, developing bodies, lungs, eyes, and needs to be comfortable to learn. And I, I, I thank you for offering me this opportunity to take it, to explain the $300,000 and what we're spending, I think it's 90% of it on. And it will be a multi-year project. And I want to thank the community for always supporting our schools by voting positively on the $300,000 for long-term maintenance. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Lassard while he's here? Okay, thank you, Keith.
All right, thank you very much.
Mary, are you all set? Okay. Lois?
Sure. So we received a notification from the Department of Transportation, and just to let you know that they are actually, the department is proposing a fixed bridge alternative, which is the removal of the bridge, which is the bridge that is, the bridge that connects Seabrook Sun Valley to Hampton. There is some concern about this, this bridge. It's actually called the Neil R. Underwood Bridge, which is the New Hampshire 1A over the Hampton River at the inlet to the Hampton Harbor. It was built in 1949, 1,200-foot bridge, and it is considered to be on the department's red list, which means it needs some significant repair. It also is hoping to improve the pedestrian and the cyclist mobility at the crossing and accommodate the existing marine users. There is a preferred, the proposed preferred alternative will adversely affect the National Historic Register Eligible Bridge. So they're having a public meeting, and I'm going to actually put this in my newsletter this week, so families have it. There is going to be a meeting that is scheduled for January 14th at 6:00 PM. So I'm gonna guess we're gonna have to get that out sooner than that. So we'll send a letter out to folks. It's at 6:00 PM. This again is through Zoom. We do have the link there in the dial-in option for any Hampton citizens that are interested in taking part in that meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to present to the citizens and the public officials with information regarding that proposed project and to solicit the public input to ensure that project decisions meet public transportation needs and community goals and protect and enhance the environment. So that is going to be again this Thursday evening at 6:00 PM. All right? So I will give the meeting links if anyone is interested in attending. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then just to highlight a couple of things on our, on my report, and that is that we continue to partner with Demonstrative Success in supporting parents and their assisting their students remotely. Again, this is not meant to be a required training. It's really just an optional training that can be another resource for families as well as a place, if you have a question and you feel more comfortable asking somebody from an independent party, you can do that. They're really, they're really great, Demonstrative Success. And obviously, this Thursday, we will be attending the budget meeting. Mrs. Curtis and I, finance director, will be doing that Thursday night at 7:00. And then, of course, the deliberative session, which will be here in Hampton Academy Gymnasium on Tuesday, February 2nd, with the fourth being the snow date. And just to let you know that the counselors are working with Dr. Les Masterman and Stacy Picard on our suicide prevention protocol. That is part of a new policy and law that was put into effect this year. So just so you know, we are working through that policy, and we are ensuring that we are following all parts of that, just to highlight that. And to also let you know that Special Education is participating in professional development related to case management. And I'm really excited that Dr. DeSylvan Atherton is providing that for our case managers. That'll be a great opportunity for, for all of them to really look at special ed laws, paperwork, and processes, just to make sure that everyone is on the same page, as those laws can change. Paperwork does change. It'll just be great information. Tomorrow, the New, our Hampton leadership team will be meeting with New Hampshire Listens in our ongoing efforts to look at diversity and being sure that we are educating all of our students. So we look forward to that tomorrow. We have included in the, in your board packet, a map that Mrs. McPhee, our ESOL teacher, has put together for you that highlights where our students are from. And it is very interesting to note the many countries that are represented in your packet with the expanding population of our, our ELL students. So just to share that with you. And then I do want to talk about my fifth goal, which is obviously the one that we are all very curious about, and Frank, you brought it up, with regard to our return to brick and mortar from our hybrid model. I want to let you know that originally there was some thought that we might be considered with the essential workers that were given the vaccine between January and March. Unfortunately, educators, teachers, and healthcare workers, I'm sorry, and childcare workers, my mistake, daycare workers and educators got moved to the 2A group, which means our window of vaccinations is March to May. So I was a little, a little disappointed to hear that, and I have brought it up to the Southeasters Superintendent's meeting, just because I know that there has been great pressure on all of us to do our best to provide in-person learning. And we were hopeful with 2021, hoping the vaccines were going to be a little sooner than they are. But we are, as it is, scheduled for that March to May. And I'm told that we would be going to the Exeter facility where they are administering the Moderna vaccine. There's our two vaccines, the Pfizer and the Moderna. Moderna, my understanding is Pfizer is being for, being reserved for those who have immunocompromised or at the at-risk category. So what does that mean? So my understanding of how it's worked, and we are fortunate that our school nurses, because they are first responders, they have gotten the first round of the vaccine, which I'm really excited that they have gotten. But how it works is you would get an email inviting you to sign up to get the vaccine, and then, of course, you can go to any of our facilities. Our nearest one is, as I said, Exeter High School. And then you can go and they will give you the vaccine there. How it stands is you get the first vaccine, and then three weeks later, 21 days, you're given the second vaccine. And then 14 days after that second vaccine, you are considered to be in a, in a place to be, you know, safe, I guess, is what we would say, in that you would not get it. You would build up the antibodies, you'd have the antigens, and, and that would be good. My concern is that, that March to May makes me very nervous in the sense that if it's at the beginning of March, we're in a good place. If we're at the end of May, we're in a bad place. So I am going to continue to keep you apprised of the information. As I know it, I did share this with my Friday newsletter last week in urging everyone to be patient, including myself, that at least March is within sight. Here we are, mid-January. So I'm hopeful, but I won't lie to you, I was a little disappointed. I was hoping it was going to be a little closer. But that's where it's at, Frank. So we are, we're obviously watching numbers. I was really excited to see, but as expected, that the numbers over the holiday break went down fairly low. In fact, the lowest they've been since probably back in October, they were around 48. But then when we started school last week, they, they rose up to 58, and then they were, rose as high as 70. They're down now around 60 at this time. So they are kind of all over the place. I was really not too concerned with last week returning to school. I'm really concerned with this week and next week in terms of the potential surge resulting from what happened over the holiday breaks. And it's just, it's just the nature of the beast. I think our community has done a phenomenal job being very careful. I know they have. I talk to kids. They tell me what they did over the break. I've talked to staff. They told me what they did over the break. I mean, everybody had a low, low-key break, but the bottom line is, is that the numbers are just, are just high, unfortunately, and transmission is high. And, you know, you've got families and everybody doing everything right. And even in spite of that, we are still getting positive cases. So it is no, it's no slight to anyone, and I appreciate everyone's willingness to not only to work with us, but to be cooperative and to, and to just keep us apprised so that, again, we can do notification as we are required to do by DTHHS and to let our families know. So that's where it's at. And we just, we watch the numbers, and we continue to be vigilant, and you know that I notify you whenever that might be, whether it's a Saturday or it's a Monday. And I will continue to do that. So, questions?
Okay.
Yes.
As of today, the federal government, I didn't know if you picked up on it, is going to release all additional reserve vaccine on both ends. So that means the state, New Hampshire, will probably be getting additional vaccine, which means that we may be able to have a push-up on the schedule. I would like to say that maybe a recommendation, maybe a letter from this board going to the governor emphasizing that teachers should be considered, be moved up on the list in order to activate and move kids to a brick and mortar situation sooner rather than later. And I think if, if we can do that, and if the vaccines are available, and there's a third one coming out by Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Right.
All right, which was not mentioned, we might be able to get these kids back in probably at the end of March. I'm hoping, I'm hoping. But I, I think, you know, I'm making a recommendation list that we, as a board, send a letter to Sanino, asking him to reconsider putting teachers back into the upper phase, so we can address the issue with the kids.
I'm happy to draft a letter. Do I, do I need to bring it back to you people, or can I?
No, I think, I'm comfortable with you drafting it and sending it.
Ginny, are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah. I'm just thinking every other school district's gonna do the same.
I know.
Which is, which is okay.
Yeah.
But the teachers are right below the emergency workers. And, you know, it's tough because people over 75 come in Tier A, people who are 70, I think, are back in 2A. Daycare workers were in 3, now they moved up to 2A. And it's, you know, it's an interesting character.
Well, they've moved 65-plus up.
To 1B.
65.
To 1B, and immunocompromised is also 1B.
Yeah.
I was just looking at that. Those, that's the new, that was a.
But with the additional vaccine being made available, I think we have an opportunity, especially in this state.
We can try.
And I think, you know, give it a shot.
And, and any of our staff that is immunocompromised, make sure they get into the 1A.
You know, I, I think that there, obviously, this is under HIPAA, right?
Yeah.
People are not, they don't have to share with me. I don't expect them to share with me. But somebody did share with me, that they were surprised that they got an invitation to take the vaccine, but then they said, you basically will be with 2A. So I don't know how it's interfacing with their primary care physicians, right, to your point. But I would think that there should be some kind of a crossover with primary care physicians versus, you know, educators. So.
I think they're telling everyone, Lois, as their tier gets close, call your PCP because they're the ones that's gonna make the appointment or decision.
Yep. Yep. So.
And I'd like to take one step further and say, you know, and to the parents in the community, you know, please, call your state reps, send letters, you know, urging them to reconsider teachers being moved up.
Yeah.
You know? Only to get these kids back. They need to get back.
Even if they're moved up, Frank, I think March would be very, very early, because your second shot would be in March.
Right. But I'm looking at, you know, it's better than looking at May. So we can get April, May, and part of June in. You know, it's a plus for us.
It is.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions for the superintendent?
No.
Okay. Mariah, Finance?
Yes. I wanted to thank Keith for, for giving us a little bit extra information on the $300,000 Warren Article 3 on the maintenance. We've had a lot of call-ins on that, questioning why we keep it flat every year. And because we've done the academy, they, they think that it's unneeded. So I really appreciate the, the communication, Keith. So we discussed about this Thursday, the deliberative session is Tuesday, the 2nd of February at the gymnasium, at the academy at 7:00. I want to let everybody know that I have information up on our website, www.sau90.org. If you go onto our website, you can go under Operations, you can go under the Business Office, and then it's under Budget and Elections. And I have the Warren article up. I have a presentation up. I have the draft budget. So there's a lot of information on the website. I also have, it's called Voting Information. So if you go on to that, it will give you dates of the deliberative session, the times, the snow date. It's also going to give you information about the Hampton School District's elected positions. So we have two elected school board members up. We have a school district moderator, a school district clerk, a school district treasurer. They're all three terms, three-year terms, and the candidates must file with the town clerk's office at Hampton Town Hall beginning Wednesday, January 20th. And it ends at 5:00 on Friday, January 29th. So that's all. So all that information's also on our website. So that's all, so all that information's also on our website, but I just wanted to put that information out. I have had some calls and questioning on that. I also would like to share with you that we were awarded a new grant. It's Title I, Part 2D, D2, and it's the amount of $36,000. This grant is aimed to meet the needs of children and youth and addressing all the gaps that we've had. So we're, we're taking that, and we have to decide what we, you know, want to use for that and write it up, but it was a little extra money that we weren't expecting in Title I. So that's exciting news for us. A lot of good ideas that we already have to utilize that money, so that, that will We, this, this month is New Year, so my office is rather busy. We've got all the W-2s, 1099s, health insurance, all that due at the end of the month, and then with the hearings and the meetings and the questions. So it's been a busy month, but it's exciting. Any questions, feel free to contact me, my information's on the website. If you have any questions on the budget, on the warrant articles, anything, feel free to give me a call. I've, I've been trying to, to call anybody and everybody back that has questions. I'd rather have questions than not a vote because you didn't understand it. So feel free to contact me. Other than that, do you have any questions on my, my report?
I just have a comment. In today's Portsmouth Herald, there was an article about the Portsmouth City Budget. Did you see that? And how it was affected by the dramatic increases in retirement.
Retirement, exactly.
It was astonishing, astonishing.
Yep.
So I hope people understand that.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. That's a great point.
I also think this is a year that you have to explain the budget. If you have a warrant article, you have to work for it. COVID hasn't only affected the schools or the town government, it's affected a lot of individual households' budgets. So it's very important to get the explanations out, to plead your cases on television and Channel 22 and Channel 13, because people should vote, a lot of people, and you can vote absentee, so that is an option right up until the day before elections to vote. But you have to explain your reasons for doing things, because this is going to be a tough year.
Very tough year.
Okay, we have some policies that we, I don't know if we've had time to look at them. These are, I'll let Lois explain these.
Yes.
These are pretty much mandated.
Right, so the policies, I've asked, just because some of the policies seem like they were, we hadn't looked at them in almost 10 years, some of them, so I've asked, I thought it'd be important for us to start looking through them, and so Kathy and I have been looking through the legal ones first. I know that Andrea, you and I met, to look at them, and the, and the revisions are ever so slight, but we know when we talk about legalese, it's that little word, right, can make, can make a big difference, but these are all legal policies that we have to really adopt, so they're going to be in your, in your packet probably going forward. So the, the first five are all in a second read, and you can see that they are all just related to, to laws, believe in, you know, signatures, drug-free workplace, drug-free schools, nondiscriminations. The only one that is new is the DAF, which is a very lengthy policy, but it's all related to the administration of federal grant funds that obviously Mariah, myself, and Dr. De Silva-Napton, as our office is very involved with. But again, it's, it's a policy we have to adopt. We have no, we can't make changes, so.
So do you want to take all of these, including the DAF? I'm just, I'm just seeing what.
Yeah.
All, all of these, and take them all at the same time?
I would recommend at least the first, all of them, but maybe DAF, because the first ones are, one is a second read and one is a first read.
Okay.
So maybe take your second reads.
All right, well, we'll do them one at a time. Let, my, mine seems to be, is that the first one here?
That's the last one, that's DAF, that's the first read. DAF is the first read. The DAF on the administration of federal grant funds is the first read, the rest are all second reads.
We only have DAF.
Oh, you know why?
Well, that's right.
We were supposed to put those others in ourselves.
Yes, we were.
Right, 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 right. I don't have mine with me.
I think mine are attached, if you guys want to look at them.
Well.
I remember.
Maybe.
We were supposed to put them.
Lois, why don't you?
Can I read them off for you?
Yes, you read them off, and then we'll get a motion, and then we'll act on it.
Okay, so the first one is capital ACE, ACE, which is procedural safeguards, nondiscrimination on the basis of a handicapped disability, and it's a, just a revised update in the second read.
A motion to.
Make the motion to accept.
Moved, Frank, seconded Andrea. Discussion, all in favor, 5-0.
Okay, the second one is ADB/GBEC, which is on drug-free workplace and drug-free schools. Again, it's a second read.
Make the motion to accept.
Moved, Frank, seconded Pepper. All those in favor? I should've said discussion, but I didn't think there was. Okay.
Thank you. The next one is Policy DGA, which is around authorized signatures, and again, this is also a second read.
Moved.
Who?
Pepper, move her, pepper, seconded Frank. Discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous.
And the next one is Policy DK, which is around payments, checks, and manifests. This is a second read as well.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Moved, Frank, seconded Pepper. Discussion, all those in favor?
And the next one is Policy JLCE, which is around emergency care and first aid. This is also a second read.
Make the motion to accept.
Moved, Frank, seconded Jenny?
Yep.
Seconded Jenny, discussion, all those in favor?
And the next one is Policy EBBD, which is on indoor air quality, and this is also a second read.
Make the motion to accept.
Moved, Frank, seconded Pepper. Discussion, all those in favor?
So that new one is DAF, which is about 20 pages, and it's.
That's this one.
Yeah.
That's the one in your package.
Yeah, of federal grant funds. So it's, it's, it's pretty lengthy, but it, what it does is it just outlines all of the details of our federal grants.
Okay, so this whole thing is a first read?
Correct.
Okay. You want to act on it, or you want to leave it until the next meeting?
The only thing that's been done, like you say, is to just, there's very small little, like, legal little places that have to, there's nothing.
It's legality issues, right?
Yeah, it's.
Then I make a motion that we move forward with it.
Okay, go, go ahead, and a seconded Pepper.
Yep.
Go ahead, is it first? Okay.
I would, yeah.
Well, and then you won't need to either bring it or print it out again. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. So as a first read, we'll bring it back again, or a second read?
No.
Nope.
Yeah, it's all management and monitoring, which we have to do with the DOE system anyways.
It's all good.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so we have some minutes. Motion for the minutes of December 8th, moved Pepper.
Yep.
I'll second it.
Seconded Frank. Discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous. I was looking to see if we had a non-public deal.
You do, in the back.
Oh, there it is. The only thing I would say about this on page 82, it's, it says near the bottom, "On a motion by Frank DeLuca, seconded by Pepper Ring, the board voted 5-0 to non-return."
There's two, oh, yeah, non-return.
To non-return to public session? Shouldn't that be just return?
Yeah. Two to return to, yeah, whatever.
Yeah. Other than that, motion to accept? Moved Frank, seconded Pepper. All those in favor? Okay.
When did we end the public session, right?
It should be, I think it should be end the meeting.
At the end of the meeting. We came out and we ended it.
8:18?
Eight, yeah.
There was no discussion, no nothing.
Yeah, that should be changed to meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that takes care of that. I, I know we need to go into non-public for one item, I don't know if there are other items.
There's two, there's two items that you left with us regarding principles and education and.
Okay, you, we'll do them in non.
Yes.
But we need to go, so it's RSA 91A3, Roman numeral 2, in parentheses, A. Frank?
Yes.
Pepper, yes? Jenny?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
When are we going to discuss snow days?
And we also have to talk about retirees. I'll let them know we're in non-public.
Okay, I guess we have to discuss it, we said we would discuss it at this.
Well, we got to do it, you can't do it in non-public.
No, no, we'll go back into public. Go back into public.
We'll probably have some before then, but I know, do you wanna, do you wanna, do you wanna give me?
No, we have to do it when parents are gonna be able to listen and give input.
You got it, you got it.
So make sure we put that on the agenda.
I will put it on the note.
All right, we are back in public session. Um, I guess I will make the motion that we, uh, offer our current superintendent extra years to her contract so that at the end of this year, she will have five additional years.
I'll second it.
Okay, I just was gonna clarify. So that the end, in, in, uh, June thirtieth, her, um, the end of this year, she will start a contract with five years and we know what the money for the first year is out of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, did you second that, Frank? You seconded it. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And is there any other business?
I make the motion that we adjourn.
Okay, seconded. Pepper? Um, all those in favor?